All right, 6:00 PM, let's go ahead and call the meeting to order, roll call please.
Pascoe?
Here.
Stare?
Here.
Nielsen?
Here.
Jasperson?
Here.
Delaway?
Here.
Ledge of Legends? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. One C is acknowledgment of the Open Meetings Act, which was proposed by South Adrets. Wendy, adoption of the agenda?
I move to adopt the agenda.
Clear.
Now, call for a vote. Motion carries four to zero. Twenty, approval of consent agenda items.
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Clear.
Call for a vote, please. Motion carries four to zero. To a public hearing, amendments to Waverly zoning regulations, Article Two. We will go ahead and open that at 6:01 PM. So, the changes in Article Two, Mike, this is, if you wanna just real quickly tell us what the change in Article Two is?
Yeah, Mike Paul, City Waverly, Building Inspector, Zoning Administrator. Article Two disordnance, all we're doing is adding the definition for a swimming pool. It's basically anything, any structure that holds water and it's greater than twenty-four inches in depth.
Do they have any questions about that change to Article Two?
Shouldn't have a circumference size as well, some people have those fountains and things like that. Would that be attempted to fall under that? It's a water fountain?
What says intent?
It's the intent for recreational bathing that contains water, swimming or recreational bathing. So if it's meant to be a water feature, that's the intention of it, then I wouldn't consider that a swimming pool. That'd be a landscaping item or something, yeah.
Anyone else from the public have anything to say? All right, we will close the public hearing at 6:03. Move to consideration of course, reading Order 2517.
I move for the first reading, to approve the first reading of Orders 2517, sir.
This is an ordinance of the City of Waverly to amend the Waverly zoning regulations, Article Two definitions. Any discussion? So someone might have to vote on three times?
Yes. Unless you make an amendment, do away with it.
Can I make an amendment to waive that? Is that okay?
Yeah.
Just a second.
Oh, sorry. What's the reason why you have to hurry up?
I don't mean, do we need to vote on it three more times? I guess that's just my thought.
Is, is there any reason, like time-wise, is there any reason that you're trying to get this done quickly?
Well, I guess for all of these, including, there's gonna be three more ordinance, or excuse me, four more ordinances. From my perspective, to be able to regulate what we're trying to pass here, the sooner we get it passed, we, like, I can actually regulate it.
But there's no, there's no-
For zoning regulations, instead of just what we've been doing as, you know, as procedure in the past. So, yeah.
And we don't have to do that.
It'd be good to get it done. Yeah, it wouldn't hurt to get it done sooner than later, if that's what you're asking.
All right, any other discussion? All right, let's call for a vote on the waiving of the three readings. Motion carries three to one. Okay, now let's call for a vote on the ordinance itself, amending Order 2517. On third and final, third and final reading, that's three. Motion carries four to zero. Okay, public, keeps moving. Public hearing, amendments to Waverly zoning regulations, Article Six. Let's go ahead and open that at 6:05. Can you tell us what this change is, Mike? This amendment is?
Um, let's see. Under Section One of the ordinance, eleven six oh three, the zoning regulations, we deleted or we removed two-family residential as a residential use under the supplemental use regulations because it's not, that term is not mentioned anywhere else in zoning regulations and there are no, there's nothing to actually regulate for a two, there is, basically there is no two-family residential. It's only mentioned of it in the regulations, and so we removed that portion of it. The way that the, the regulation, the way that the zoning regulations formerly read was, it mentioned setbacks for basically two residences on a single lot, which unless it's a townhome lot, it's not, or a duplex lot, it's not allowed, or like a multifamily lot. So they have to be an attached structure typically. So a two-family residential essentially is referring to an accessory dwelling unit, which we do not regulate, or I guess even technically allow in this town, so.
Okay, what else is under number six? Is that everything?
Uh, that was under, when, that was Section One of the ordinance. And then the rest of it, there, there was some reordering then because we deleted something. So there's some additional language that had to be shown on there as it reads, as it will read in the regulations. Go down to homestead exemptions, I think there's just a grammar change for, what? Single family, that's under H. You go under homestead exemptions. See, that would be Section Two of the ordinance. So yeah, simple spelling grammar change. Section Three of the ordinance. Daycare, we deleted, there's a couple, two regulations at the end that we deleted. One of them was that a daycare may not be located along a major arterial street as designated in the city's comprehensive development plan. And the second one was that the daycare must provide at least one hundred square feet of open space per child, entirely enclosed by a building fence or a wall of a height of at least six feet. Now, the, the state of Nebraska is the one that licenses daycares. And so they cannot, if it's any more than four children, they have to have a state, or a state license. We do not actually, we have these in our regulations, but we don't actually go around and regulate daycares unless it's, unless a special use permit is required for that. And that's, that's still in here, if they, it's in a certain district, they're required a special use permit. So that's still a requirement for the City of Waverly. The main thing is along a major arterial street, typically, the state, they have their own regulations as far as if, what needs to be done for fencing and, you know, whatnot. And also the, the amount of square feet per child, I think, is significantly less than what we had in our regulations. Except once again, we don't actually go around and regulate this, so I figured that's, leave that up to the state. Number three, we just left it as daycare centers accommodating no more than four children or adults shall conform with all requirements and licensures of the state of Nebraska. Mike, is Amberly an arterial street? I don't know if that's considered an arterial street.
I think it's officially classified by the law.
It's, depends on the amount of traffic. Leaving here, officially. No, that's pretty, that's, on Amberly?
That doesn't open to Amberly, it just backs up to Amberly.
Oh, it just backs up, I see, okay, so.
And that's everything in Article Six, correct?
Section Three, Section Four. Inserting swimming pools on the supplemental use regulations, miscellaneous uses. This is basically, it's a, it's miscellaneous type, use type for a property, and we add swimming pools to that, and this basically gives you your rate for pool regulations. This wouldn't include like municipal pools or public pools, this is private property. So permit required, barrier requirement. Typical four-feet height, now, this, this used to be, there used to be a requirement in the 2012 International Residential Code, they added it under an appendix, we updated to the 2018 code, they got rid of that appendix, and basically reference the international pool and spa code now, which we don't technically have adopted. So this is what we, these are the basic regulations that we've been enforcing, but it's not, it wasn't ever in our zoning regulations, so.
Great. Thank you. Does anyone want to comment in the public hearing on this amendment? We will close the public hearing at 6:12. And move to consideration of the first reading of Order 2518, amending Article Six.
I move to approve first reading of Orders 2518, Article Six.
Sir.
Uh-huh.
You want to weigh your own?
Oh, hold on, hold on, I gotta read it by title. An ordinance of the City of Waverly, Nebraska to amend the Waverly zoning regulations, Article Six supplemental use regulations.
So, motion to waive three readings?
Okay.
My motion.
All seconded. Discussion on this?
I, I'm probably gonna vote against it again, like I did last time, just because there's, I, I don't see a need to hurry through this, so that gives the poll a more chance to talk about it and come to us with three readings, which is why I, that's why I'm voting.
I feel like the pool stuff is new in the actual regulation and is enough that I'm probably, for the same law, please take one, just because there's more substance to it.
Yeah.
You might agree.
I know, that's why I'm laughing. These are the pool regulations that we've been following, just they weren't like put anywhere, is that?
We have handouts that state most of this. One of, one of the regulations in the handouts was an eight-foot setback from a rear property line and five feet from the side yard lot lines. Now, the, I don't know why there's, the rear yard and the side yard would be different as far as the setback for safety reasons, especially on interior lot, but I would say it's pretty common practice in most communities, five feet in general, from the surface of the water to the property line. The other thing we added was a six-foot distance for, for in-ground pools from any structure, so, you don't, you know, you're, you're not causing any harm to the existing footing to a home or causing it to shift in any way. Also, just for kids jumping off the roof or something during, into a pool. So those, those are a couple of the other additional regulations that are in there. It's, like I said, we, as a zoning administrator, if someone applies for a permit, I can just tell them that, but if they look into it and it's, say, well, here's your zoning reg state, that's what they, legally, that's what they can go by, and I can approve the permit that way until this gets passed, so.
All right, let's call for a vote on waiving the three readings, please. I mean-
I don't, I think it regards three-quarters.
Oh, it does.
And so I don't think you can break that tie.
Okay, great, so it's on three readings.
Yeah.
All right, so let's call for a vote on the first reading, please. Motion carrying, four to one. Okay. Now, let's do a public hearing for amendments to Article Seven in the zoning regulations, opening at 6:16, please. So what are we amending in this one, Mike?
Okay, under Section One. Go down a little ways towards the end, it'd be, at the end of the accessory structures, letter O. So deleted, they had lamp posts under the accessory structures. That is, let's see, what is that? Basically, eleven seven oh four, encroachments on required yards, accessory structures. They had setbacks listed for lamp posts under accessory structures. Well, right below that, then in number seven, they had lamp posts with the maximum height and setbacks. And so we're just eliminating the redundancy of it, I guess. Declassifying it as an accessory structure. And it just stands alone as a lamp post now. Let's see, Section Three refers to satellite antennas and allowances. Or the, the original zoning regulations stated each lot shall have no more than one satellite antenna, while we're changing that to dwelling unit. Figure in townhomes, apartment buildings, whatnot, that are on a single lot. Satellites aren't really, they're becoming less prevalent anyways. We just figured this is something easy to, just as a fairness part of the ordinance. I don't know that that would ever be enforced anyways if an apartment had multiple satellite dishes hanging off the sides, so. Vision clearance zones, or Section Four of the ordinance. Let's see. We're just clearing up a height that is allowed in the vision clearance zones. And under G there, it was listed as thirty-six inches, well, a typical vision clearance zone at an intersection, which is basically measured from the point of the intersection to the back of the curve, forty-five feet either direction, creates a triangle. Nothing in that clearance zone can be more than thirty inches, so we're just, we're changing that. It's actually more restrictive to basically conform with the rest of the regulations. Then we added, added a reference at the end of that paragraph there. It's a C eleven seven oh seven D for site obstruction in street intersections. And that actually has a diagram on there that shows the sightline triangle and whatnot. Let's see, Section Five. I think we, there was just clarification under number two there. We're changing that from conditional use permit to special use permit, because that's the type of permits that we, that we have, we don't have a, we don't have it labeled conditional use permit, it's labeled as a special use permit, even though it's interchangeable, but just changing the language there to conform with our permits. Section Six, some fence regulations. We're inserting number three. This, this again has to do with, with basically that, that clearance zone, that site clearance zone. There's nothing that referenced anything about a residential driveway, a sidewalk, about having like, because you can, per our zoning regulations, you can have a fence in your front yard as long, it's not any more than forty inches, and you have to have like more than fifty percent open space, like a chain, a short chain link fence, or like a picket fence with spacing between the pickets would be allowed, but in this case, there wasn't anything that basically allowed that fence not to go right up to the driveway along the property line there. So to, I guess, just to remedy that, this creates another sightline triangle, basically saying that you have to be at least fifteen feet onto the property, up the driveway, and twenty feet over along the sidewalk to create a triangle. Or if someone's backing out of the driveway and they're not hitting a pedestrian or someone that's walking by, they can see, you know, turn around and see when people are walking by. So it's just a safety issue. Probably more prevalent on like corner lots than on an interior lot. If someone used their side yard more as a backyard and then wanted to put a fence, you know, up to their prop, their front property line there and around, so. Section Seven, we took the, so letter H, protected fences around swimming pools, spas, and hot tubs. We just, we took out the language under there and just made it a reference, a C-section, eleven six twelve, swimming pool barrier requirements, which is basically what we did on that prior ordinance where we gave all the swimming pool requirements. That is all the barrier requirements already listed in it, so. It technically doesn't have to be a fence that goes around the pool. I mean, a part of the house can be considered as a barrier. Accessory structure could be considered a barrier, as long as it's, it meets the height. I mean, it's, it's a solid barrier, so you can have an abutting fence to that, and that can be considered part of your barrier around the pool. Uh, let's see, Section Eight, residential fences, we had an exception. So in residential districts, the maximum height for a fence is six feet. And we added an exception for separate districts, so a fence separating a residential lot from a commercial or industrial lot may be a height of eight feet. So we, we do require permits for fences here, so when they pull the permit, that's when we can check our height. If it's abutting a separate district or if it's residential, that's abutting a commercial district, then that, that property line can, can be eight feet. Now, if the other side of the lot is still residential, then that would be considered a maximum of six feet. Still would have to conform with the existing regulations. And that's that, good for that ordinance.
That's it?
That's all, yeah.
All right.
Don't worry, there's, there were a couple more, so.
All right, does anybody have any questions or comments on? Twenty-five nineteen, amending twenty-five nineteen. All right, we will close the public hearing at 6:23. And move to consideration of first reading of Order twenty-five nineteen.
I move to approve first reading of Orders twenty-five nineteen, Article Six.
Sir.
An ordinance of the City of Waverly, Nebraska to amend the Waverly zoning regulations, Article Seven supplemental site development regulations. Any discussion?
I thought that was supposed to be his job, or me?
Mark, Mark is just gracious and he's in force, I can handle it.
I'm ready to hear it.
All right, in discussion? Okay, call for a vote, please. Motion carrying four to zero. Public hearing amendments to Waverly zoning regulations, Article Nine, off-street parking requirements, open at 6:24, please. Which are changes here?
Okay, section one of the ordinance, under, let's see, what is it, eleven nine oh nine, C, parking of motor vehicles and/or tow trailers, RVs, boats, and other recreational equipment should not be permitted in the rear, front, rear, or side yards of a platted lot unless they are parked on a paved surface. Now, we, that, before that read, the word concrete was in front of the word paved. Now, you go in this section, in the zoning regulations, that's the only, under the location of parking, there's six or seven different paragraphs that mention the word paved. None of them have the word concrete in front of it. Now, the definition of paving in our regulations, it's any, any permanently surface, pour, surface with poured concrete, concrete pavers, brick, or other masonry material, asphalt, or asphaltic concrete. So basically anything, any of those materials would be considered a paved surface. Now, when you put the word concrete in front of it, that just raises, okay, well, the concrete blocks count. We're just, does asphalt count? Well, it says concrete, you know, but it also says asphaltic concrete and or paved. So I mean, it just, it created confusion there. We do have, I know there's probably more than one resident that uses, utilizes something other than just traditional cast-in-place poured concrete to park a vehicle on. As far as regulating that, we don't, we don't require permits for any paving that's less than two feet off the ground, so any slabs, we don't, we don't require permits for that. I don't know of any communities or in this area that do that. So in order to regulate it, it gets tough to say, oh, it's gotta be concrete paved, you know. I think the intention of it is just to keep it off the grass is the main thing, and keep gravel from entering the street. So I think as long as it's a hard surface material that can handle the weight of, I mean, if it cracks, it's kind of a design flaw, there's no permit required, that's on the, that's, leave that on the owner. This is just something that we can't really regulate, or it's hard to regulate, and it, it just clarifies things, I think, just leave it. We have a definition for what pavement is, just as long as it's a hard surface material that conforms to that definition right there, then they should be fine.
And with the parking rights, there's quite a list of requirements there too, like that would kinda go along with, with that and give some more structure to it.
What do you mean exactly?
Like where you can park a vehicle, that has to be still licensed and current and just-
Yeah, it has to be on a paved driveway. So like, for example, if you go, prior to the line we're changing here, there's one that's like, so, parking of personal vehicles permitted on a paved driveway, outside of an enclosed structure, within the front yard setback, but shall in no case encroach upon the public right of way. So like, you know, that's, that's just one other line that they have under these regulations, and every other one just says the word paved. Now, if they do anything in the right of way, they have to get a permit for it. And we do, that has to be five-inch thick, so like driveway approach, it has to be five-inch thick poured concrete. The sidewalk that crosses their vehicle path, that has to be five-inch poured sidewalk. So, and that does require permit and inspection by the city, so. Basically, all that's saying is once it's off-street parking, so once it's on private property, as long as it's hard surface material, they can park their vehicle on it. But gravel, grass, dirt, mud, can't, yeah, you're not supposed to park, or leave it parked there for an extended period of time, so.
Something on that? All right. Anyone have a comment?
Let's see, we gotta keep going.
Oh, was that the only one on?
Uh, well, there's one more for Section Two. Special provisions for recreational vehicles and boats. Now, we, what we added here was, RVs and boats may not be parked less than two feet from the front property line and not less than two feet from any side and/or rear lot lines of the property. And no part of any parked recreational vehicle or boat may- No part of any parked recreational vehicle or boat may extend over a public sidewalk or public driveway. So it's basically just saying. You're gonna park your RV on the front, you know, on your driveway or wherever. If you're gonna pour concrete to park it on, it's gotta be at least two feet from the property line. If you're out front. RVs are probably the main culprit for creating a side obstruction. It's gotta stay two feet off the property line. Property line is typically about two, three feet inside the sidewalk up towards the property. So that provides you a little extra setback and just to keep it off the sidewalks for pedestrians, so. There wasn't anything in our zoning regs that mentioned any of that, so.
Anyone have any comments? Alright, we will go ahead and close that one at six thirty-one. Consideration of first reading of ordinance twenty-five twenty.
I move to approve first reading of ordinance twenty-five twenty, article nine.
Sir.
In ordinance of the city of Waverly, to amend the Waverly zoning regulations, Article nine, off-street parking.
Any discussion? I was gonna suggest that we waive the three, but with the RV stuff, I think we should leave it in case people want to talk about the RVs. That's my opinion. Alright, call for a vote please.
Motion carrying four to zero.
Alright, public hearing amendments, Waverly zoning regulations, Article ten, sign regulations. We will go ahead and open that at six thirty-one.
Alright, section one of the ordinance, definition of terms. This is under sign regulations. So we just added a definition for a billboard. Previously did not have a definition or define what a billboard sign is. So an outdoor advertising sign that displays products or services that are not typically available at the location of the signed site, but that fairly vague. As you never know, billboard can be any size or shape, height. As long as it, you know, conforms to the size requirements in the zoning regulations. So moving on then to, then the rest of that, those definition of terms, it's just renumbering since we inserted the definition. So that's creates a couple of new pages there. Section two. Basic design elements for on-premises signs. Now, we had to add billboards to that then. And so that is just, basically, these are your, your design regulations. Special permit shall be required to erect a billboard. Then one of them is just where it's located, has to be located in the interstate corridor or overlay district, which we already required that based on. What we had allowed for when we permitted the billboard a couple of years ago over on the Lincoln Auto Auction. But we didn't call it a billboard, we just called it a detached sign at that time and said we could allow for detached sign up to this size. So we're, we're kind of clarifying this now. Actually defining that as a billboard. So this also defines the size of it, which is your max size is six hundred seventy-two square feet or fourteen by forty-eight. Maximum of two back-to-back signs will be, shall be permitted, so you can't have like a triangle or a square rotating billboard. Then, billboards adjacent to the interstate or federal highway must comply with all state and federal advertising regulations. So. That, they have to get a permit through the state. NDOT regulates this more than we ever will. So they have a much longer list of regulations for billboards and where they can be placed. So anytime someone comes to us or applies for a billboard through a special use permit, first we have to reach out to the state and say, does it seem feasible? And so we have to get that confirmation from them first before we even move forward permitting a billboard. So. Section three, table ten-one, this just basically shows where, what types of signs are permitted, like what districts. So we're just adding billboard there. And then we. Basically, S stands for special use permit. So that is showing what district that it's allowed in, but it is, every district that it is allowed in is only allowed by a special use permit. And at the bottom of that table and the key for the legend, we just added, added that special use permit or S there because that wasn't in there before. It was either just permitted or not permitted. And then note six, we just changed detached sign to billboard. That's that.
Thank you.
Good job.
Anybody have any comments on? Public hearing four, Article ten amendments for sign regulations. Alright, we will close the public hearing at six thirty-six. Consideration of first reading of ordinance twenty-five twenty-one.
I move to approve first reading of ordinance twenty-five twenty-one, article ten.
Sir.
In ordinance of the city of Waverly, Nebraska, to amend the Waverly zoning regulations, Article ten, sign regulations.
Any discussion?
So Mike, if someone wanted to try to do it right now, what would they do? If someone. Had, wants a billboard, what would, what would they follow or what?
Well, it, it really wouldn't change much at all.
Right.
We've already had this procedure done. Basically, it would be classified as a detached sign. It would have to follow civil location requirements that are in here. It would have to be within the interstate corridor. It still have to go to NDOT, it has to be in the special, the cotton areas, what they call them, where the Department of Transportation actually allows for billboards to be placed. So they have to confirm that and then I have to confirm that with NDOT that yes, it is allowed there. And then the property owner has to want it there, you know, and obviously it's, it's gonna be on private property. So there's a lot of steps that you'd have to go through, but they have, essentially, it's still have to get a special use permit. And then the city would have, or planning commission would have to approve it. So.
So this is really a true update to our ordinance.
Yes, we're, we're adding, well, we're adding a definition for billboard. There is, so billboard was mentioned. Believe it was maybe the last line that I read where I had to comply with the licensures and requirements of the state of Nebraska. I think it's, it's, that line is mentioned somewhere else in the regulations, but that's the only place that the, the term billboard was ever used. I go, well, if we don't have a definition for billboard, why do we have that term even in our regulations? So we're defining it and now this just makes it a little more clear on what the regulations actually are for billboard.
Okay. Well, I was gonna, I was going to move to suspend the rules and approve third and final reading. And move to third and final reading.
I just had a question on the ordinance like itself. So if you look down at the very bottom, note six, like the very, very bottom last page. It doesn't need to be in there still, that note six? With what we're inserting under section two. You see what I'm saying?
That, that note six was added when we, so like I said, before it said detached sign. Because if you look on the table, detached sign, the. Like the, the sign area requirements for detached sign were much less than what it showed there. Now that note is just.
Are you saying it's duplicative? Yeah, I'm just saying like, is that necessary or how, sorry, I don't know if they make here or not, but.
Well, we could, we could have taken the thing out, I guess. I just, I left it there because I, well, it's a simple word change. Not necessarily. Like I said, I think the only reason I left it in was just because it was, it was one, it changed one word and it's just an additional clarification. It doesn't. No, because if we do it, well, I will say this, if we do that. We have to change. It's not on here. There's another table we have to change.
Okay, that's fine. I just said.
Because there's a note six on a different table.
Got it, that's fine. Sorry. Quit looking at this. Okay, so we have a first, we have a first and then a second, so we're waiting for the readings. Okay. Any discussion?
The, the reason I'm differing on this one is because this is truly just an update and bringing us in line with what is basically already done. So I mean, there's no significant changes.
So let's call for a vote on.
You don't want to hear it, do you?
Call for a vote on leaving three readings. Approving to ten final.
Motion carrying four to zero.
Now let's call for a vote under the final of twenty-five twenty-one, please.
Motion carrying four to zero.
Wow, thanks for all of that. It's wonderful, thank you.
No problem. Wake up Dave.
Alright, that was a good nap. You work harder than I do. Good evening, mayor, council, going up home lock. I think those that monitor calls for service kind of listen me to just share just a little bit of information briefly. Please lock your cars at night, remove your keys out of your vehicles. That's imperative regardless of where you live. It's not a, it's not a dig against the Waverly community, it's any community. Lock your cars, remove valuables from, from out of sight and remove those keys, preferably remove the keys and lock the car. There's also a new trend going around that you might have heard of or not, that younger teenagers are kicking front doors or trying to kick front doors in, in the middle of the night and then taking off. It can be relatively dangerous. There's, you know, looking at, watching trends myself, sometimes people take things into their own hands. When that happens, understandably, people are there to protect themselves and their families. Call law enforcement, that's what we're here for. And we get here relatively quick. That's what you pay me to, to be here and your other deputies and we're pretty close, so. Please call us if you hear something. That's what we're here for. But just keep your doors locked, your front doors locked, lock your cars at night. It's just a valuable lesson, information for me to share because that is going on right now. And then there has been a couple of isolated incidents in Waverly.
I'm gonna have to sit in the national guard.
Okay, Dave. And so I don't, I come here mostly for the entertainment, just to hear what Dave has to say. Other than that, with that, I might put in for another bid. So the bid is coming up. I wanted to share that with you. I've been doing working here for two years now. So we're gonna see if we can make it two and a half of the bids next week. I'm putting my preference to come back to Waverly if you'll have me, so. I'm sure you'll get a keep Deputy Jones too, a little bit more popular than me and a lot nicer. Just a charm, right? Your other deputy on the other side of the week, I don't know who that may be. I'm gonna try to twist Riley Levine's arm into taking that, so. Any questions?
Who's one of the best?
You're stuck with me right now, so see what we can do though.
You're good, you're good.
How's school enforcement going now? Any, any, any major issues with traffic now school popped up or is it just your normal stuff?
Just your normal, and they're patrolling Ambray pretty closely because of, it has a lot of commercial traffic on it too. I looked through the calls for service, you know, we're not seeing accidents on Ambray like some people are concerned about. And I think with slower traffic, heavier traffic, you're less likely to have accidents. It's when the traffic picks up, it's when you're seeing more accidents, especially on Highway six, hundred forty-first, maybe hundred forty-third, when the school one's not in play. But outside of that, your school resource officer, you've got a great one right now. He's new deputy, but he's got a doctorate in plug stuff and he's with a teacher at Concordia. He's part-time in Zurich County, then full-time. So he actually came as sheriff's officer for a couple of years, goes a lot of experience, he's doing great there. And Deputy Goodheart's filling in for him with him now, because Deputy Good, or the other resource officer, Tim Huntington, hurt his shoulder. It's kind of been like a six to eight week recovery, but he's also gonna be there because he's doing such a good job. And Dennis will be there accompanying him while he's on life duty there. So your schools are in good hands.
Did you say Deputy Goodheart?
Yeah, I know, don't hold that against me. The school's in good, good hands. Man, he's, he's, he's a good guy, so he's really. He's just a root here. He's just, everybody helps him, so. But yeah, we're doing good in the schools unless you have something else to say. I mean, we got the greatest band instructor.
We've got the greatest band.
So, thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate it. Alright, number four, public comments. Is there anyone here from the public that would like to make comments on a non-agenda item? Okay, come on up. So you'll come up here, I know, I believe you've already signed in. But for the record, I need you to state your name and address. You can sit down if you want.
Is it right here?
Yep. So I'm gonna tell you a couple of things because I know you're new. So you have about five minutes. And we can't, we can take everything in, but we cannot really engage, so. So we're not ignoring you. I want you to know that off the bat because it sometimes feels like that. But we, we can't engage because it is a non-agenda item. So we can't really.
Okay.
Answer questions back.
So when I do talk or is it something that you guys like discuss at a different time? Okay, okay.
So go ahead, can you say your name?
My name is Kelsey Lott. Did, do I need an address? Okay, I live on one-one-eight-two-zero North Hundred Forty-third, North Anderson. I just have a concern with that intersection right there. I know it's in a residential area, but it's coming off Waverly Road and we have a million kids on our street. And right now, they're all outside and no one stops at that intersection. And there's like a bump, teenagers are like flying through there. And my daughter is three years old and almost got hit last night, like close, slammed on the brakes and I'm traumatized. I could not even sleep last night. And my whole neighborhood agrees, they always have commented on it. That something needs to be done if there's like a speed bump or a slowdown sign or just a forward stop, I don't know. But I'm trying to think in that neighborhood if there's any other four ways and I can't really think of any, any intersections there. But I know there is intersections all over Waverly that could possibly use monitoring. But this, this one's kind of getting really busy, especially with, you know, kids walking to the bus stops and kids go, or people coming off of Waverly Road. And it's just something I really would like someone to consider because it's.
Can you say, can you tell me the intersection again?
Sorry. A Hundred and Forty-third and Saint Ronan.
That's the one right there on like Lawson Park, so.
Yeah. So, yes.
Lawson, one hundred forty-first.
It's, it's on the street where that park is.
Block, it's one block south of the park that's on that T intersection on Hundred Forty-third.
It's right in the middle of the, of the neighborhood, correct?
Yeah, yes, yeah. And just even like after school monitoring, like me and my husband are sitting outside and it's just busy, kids are flying through and. It's, it's, it's gonna happen at some point where someone is going to get hit and I'm, I'm just, I know it's not ideal in a residential area, but. Yeah, so.
One of the things we can do is ask clarifying questions. Is there a time of day that you're specifically seeing issues with, or is this an all-the-time scenario that you're concerned about?
I would say normally like non-school hours. Like even after school, I was sitting in my driveway today and kids are riding their scooter, riding their bike. There's a bunch of kids on the dirt bikes nowadays in that area and the dirt and they're always going through there. And I've seen cars multiple times not slowing down, even like almost beating another car. Because there's houses, like my daughter was going down the street and there's a house right there. She can't really see a car coming until it's, you know, right there. And there's been times where, you know, cars are up to forty miles an hour at that intersection and it's just, it's scary. And I don't even like having my kids outside. When it's busy time, so I don't know. That is just, this is very, I'm very like out of my comfort zone right now. So, yeah, I just wanted to talk about that.
Thank you for being. Yeah, thank you for coming. You did a wonderful job. As a mother, I'm sure that was very scary. So we will definitely see what we can, I mean. There's, I mean, look at your neighborhood, there's several of those intersections up there.
I know, I know.
Use a look at, I mean, honestly. So, you know, but there's only so much, so many things. So, you know, but there's only so much, so many things, I can't talk anymore. So, I can't engage anymore, girl, sorry, that's the hardest part about this.
I would bring it back in the future.
We can bring it back, we can bring it back in the future.
I would point out, if I'm looking at correctly, it does actually appear to be the only four-way intersection in that entire neighborhood, current business.
Yeah.
The rest are all Ts of some kind.
Yeah, that's true.
So it is a little unique.
Yeah.
There might be some more soon, but as of right now, that is the only four.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, is there anyone else here that was coming to talk about a non-agenda item?
I don't want to tell me, but...
Okay. Can you go ahead and state your name and address, Morris, please?
Ryan Hendricks, one four two three zero Cavalier Court. So I'll try to keep it as brief as I can, the reason we're here is we've had a ongoing battle, oh, that's the right word, nuisance with our neighbor. We've been through this before, I don't think any of you guys were on the council when we've been through this, but we're kind of at the point where we don't know what else to do, we've followed the advice of the police, the mayor, attorneys, just nothing gets stopped. Our problem is our neighbors have three dogs. They are not home very much, so the dogs stay inside all day. In my opinion, the dogs are, want to be let out, so they are very vocal. And we have dealt with the dogs barking for five years. Literally to the point of, we're like, we don't even go outside anymore, because we're just tired of constant dog barking. We put a forty thousand dollar deck on our house and don't even use it because it's right next to the dogs who bark constantly. We can even hear the dogs inside our house. I don't currently work nights, but I work nights forever and I sleep in the morning and every morning, yeah, woke up by the dogs. Tried to be polite and talk to the neighbors themselves. Did not go well. In my opinion, they're not very accountable people, so, and me trying to talk to them, they tried to file complaints against me at work. So that wasn't an avenue for me to take anymore, so we were told to call the sheriff's office. I know very well that the sheriff's office has more to do than to go talk to someone about their barking dog, but that is the only avenue we have. We've contacted the sheriff's office on multiple occasions, they have heard the dogs barking, they have given these people tickets. These people don't pay their tickets. Again, I'm not casting this upon any of you because I don't know if any of you were a part of this, but when it came time to take them to court, the mayor's office dropped the case. So I guess our frustration is, if we have ordinances, then why don't we hold people accountable when they break those ordinances? And if we're not gonna hold people accountable, then let's spread the word to the rest of the community so that they're not paying their tickets either, and I don't, I'm not trying to be funny with this, but I know other people that have gotten tickets for barking dogs, one of which is in our neighborhood, and they paid their tickets. I don't think that's fair for them to have to pay their tickets when not everybody has to pay their tickets. So I guess I would just ask for some consistency in following the rules that we have in place. I believe there's also, is, is, I don't know if I can ask questions, but isn't there an ordinance about mowing your yard and keeping your yard in order? Well, our neighbor just mowed their yard for the second time this summer last week. So again, another reason we don't go out on our deck is the mosquitoes are incredible because they have a nice sanctuary to live in. So I don't want to make this out to be more than what it is, but it's just total frustration on the rules not being followed.
Yes, this is again, and this is a horrible time to not be able to engage back and be able to speak.
We have literally three more years until we can move. We're adding.
Everything you said sounds extremely frustrating. I mean, that's what I, that's probably the only thing I can say at this point.
And we apologize to the sheriff's office for continually wasting their time, it's just our only effort. And I wish more of our neighbors would be vocal. They know that we're the sounding board, so they put it upon our shoulders to take care of the rest of them. Thank you.
Thank you, thanks for coming.
He said keep it short. And I'm Michaela, I'm also on the one four two three zero Cavalier Court. Just to extend upon it, we have wrote the letters, we have done all the stuff that the ordinance says this is what you need to do in order to stop the problem. And it wasn't just us, the neighbors came in several times, wrote letters, dropped them off, I think you need three for a complaint to even get it filed. We did all the proper steps several times, and we're at four and a half, four and a half years of filing paperwork, calling the sheriff's office. So, I know it costs money for prosecution, but we are at the point where we're like, what do we have to pay as people for sanity to say enough? Even though, yes, we would love to put it on blast to say, well, you don't have to pay your tickets, we haven't done that. But it's not fair to the rest of the community, there's six houses that are in a semicircle to this house that have to listen to the same thing we do, and they're all frustrated. So just want to be heard so that we can maybe live that three years and some solace. And yes, to stop wasting Deputy Brownell's time and everybody else that's in Waverly.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Did you both sign, just to make sure, did you both sign it?
Oh, I don't know.
Okay, we just have to keep that for the record. Thank you, guys. Is there anyone else here that would like to speak on a non-agenda item? All right, we will move on to claims for payment.
Well, that's mine, yeah.
Yes.
I move to approve claims for payment in the amount of one hundred and sixty-seven thousand nine hundred twenty-nine dollars and ninety-four cents.
Any discussion? Okay, call for a vote, please. Motion carried four to zero. Right, consideration of Resolution twenty-five fifteen approving Julian Linky application to become our next Waverly Iron Rescue member. Right there. You're fine, you're fine. Yep.
I move to approve Resolution twenty-five, oh, I'm sorry, yeah, twenty-five fifteen.
Sorry.
All right, do you want to tell us a little bit about yourself and how long, when, how long have you been coming down in?
Yeah, absolutely, my name's Julian Linky, I live in Lincoln and I've grown up here in Lincoln all my life, so Waverly, not being that far away, it's really helped me. I got my May, or my license May of last year, so I've been in EMT for a little while and I've worked in Fremont. I've been wanting to work here in Waverly, I believe the first day that I came was in early November. And I've been kinda coming pretty consistently ever since. I wanted to join Waverly Fire, I've heard great things about them, I'd like to use my skills and the things that I've taught for helping cause, also to be surrounded by people with more experience than me so I can get better learning experiences, to be a better provider, and to gain guidance when is needed, so.
Wonderful, welcome.
Yeah, welcome.
Thank you.
Perfect, thank you.
All right, let's call for a vote, please. Motion carried four to zero. Congratulations. All right, consideration of Resolution twenty-five sixteen.
I move to approve Resolution twenty-five sixteen.
Sorry.
Okay. Do you, it's just the parade route, right?
Yes.
If you want to talk to us, this is, what year is this?
What's that?
What year is this?
This is the third.
Third, yeah, perfect.
Yeah, thanks again for having me in, the parade route would not change from what we have done in the past, that has worked fine. So, yeah, Haywood, one forty-third, and then to Castlewood, so starting at West, finishing at Hamlow there. One thing, they were just suggestions from last year's deputy, and it wasn't Deputy Brownell, it was whoever was on duty that day. We had a couple of issues with cars not being moved off the parade route, and what we've done in the past is we go door to door, we put flyers in the door. That's what we've had the kids do, kind of a buy-in for them to do as well. His suggestion was, he asked if we could put signs between the street and the sidewalk, so that strip of grass there that says basically, you know, up to a week ahead of time, that there's gonna be an event happening on that Saturday, if we could do that. Because there was a couple of cars, he talked to some people, and he wanted to tow them, but he said unless a sign is posted, he can't do that. And so, that was a suggestion, nobody wants to go that route, that's not what we want, because we don't want to be towing people's cars. But that was a suggestion that he had, maybe a sign go as well, because, you know, sometimes those flyers maybe, you know, get blown away or whatever, if someone's not home, or they put them in the door. So that was a suggestion from him. And then his other suggestion was, it's a ten o'clock parade, we set up the barriers at nine thirty this last time, his suggestion was to go nine, he had a hard time clearing, like those cars that we did need to get moved, he said it was really, like he was out moving cars as the first band was starting. So he asked if we could put the barriers up at nine, and I told him I would bring that to you guys, you know, to per consideration. So it's a ten o'clock parade, it would take about forty-five minutes for the parade, so, he asked for nine o'clock to ten forty-five if that would be acceptable. And I'm sorry, I didn't get his name that morning, and I'm sure Deputy Brownell would know who he is, but we would still go door to door as well, as long as you guys are okay with that, and put those flyers in the doors, but so we're asking if it's okay for those signs to be put out as well as the barricades a half hour earlier.
Do we need to amend for the signs?
No, signs is seventeen, so, we're good, but we, we do need to amend for nine AM, and I think nine, I think yes. I think that's, I think we should do that, I'm sure. Because he, yeah, every minute is not enough time for him to know getting them moved.
And maybe we won't have to move them if the signs...
Well, hopefully, hopefully, in that case, it's very...
And yeah, the next year we go back to nine thirty and the signs are working, I guess, you know.
How many vans do you have coming this year?
What's that?
How many vans this year?
It should be five in the parade, eight in the field, so, yeah, we've grown another, each year we've added one to each of those numbers, so. Yeah, we're getting to the, not that it's a concern of yours, but once we hit ten vans, it's gonna start getting, I don't know, we have enough parking in the high school for all those people, so, but that's, that's great, it's great balance I have.
How many were there last year?
Uh, we had, let's see, four and six, so, yeah, yeah, we keep adding.
Awesome, awesome, that's true. Okay, I suggest we do one after the other.
Yep, I would make motion to amend the time from nine thirty AM to nine AM.
Sorry.
All right, let's call for a vote on the amendment first. Motion carried four to zero. Now let's vote on the Resolution twenty-five sixteen. Motion carried four to zero. All right. Now consideration of Resolution twenty-five seventeen authorizing the, the parking signs, yeah?
I move to approve Resolution twenty-five seventeen.
Sorry.
Any discussion? Call for a vote, please.
Just so you see the time, are we getting the time at the bottom there?
So...
Oh, we have to amend that too.
But, well, no, by nine thirty. Shall be installed by nine thirty, so I can...
Oh, sure, 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 so you can, yeah, that makes sense, beforehand.
On September twenty seventh, so anytime prior to that.
Would you recommend, if you recommend it going earlier, we could, like, would you like us to give them a week, or how, like those old parking signs?
I thought we were gonna put them up the day before, maybe, but...
I think the day before makes a lot of sense.
Okay.
Because if I'm mowing, it's up for a week, that's trouble.
True, okay.
Um, but if it's up for a day...
Or if we get a render.
I do like the idea of the signs though, because it could just be a visitor at the wrong time.
Sure.
You know, and they, they didn't give the door flyer, they didn't, they didn't go in, own the house, didn't say, oh shoot, you weren't supposed to park on this street, so it makes sense, but if you pull up and see a sign.
Okay. So that Friday before, on the Saturday, we put the signs up at that point?
When do you do the flyers?
Uh, we did those the Tuesday before.
Yeah, that's perfect.
Okay.
Do you create the flyers yourself?
Yes, we do.
Have you created them already?
Yeah, I don't, it's not.
Your, your choice, but maybe putting something on a flyer that says, we would be putting a reminder sign in your yard on, on Friday. Just so that isn't a surprise too for the folks that you don't talk to.
Gotcha.
So, the resolution, Megan, I think this is what your point is, that the resolution says that the sign is gonna be installed by nine thirty on September twenty seventh. So are you saying that since it says by nine thirty, doesn't mean no longer than?
Yeah, because I don't think you have to change that, right?
Anthony, is that how you...
Because of reasonable interpretation of it, and alternatively, you could just amend it to line up with what you did before, it's up to you guys, so.
You're better than me at that.
Okay, all right, so, call for a vote, please. Motion carried four to zero. Okay, all right, read them, you, for luck.
All right, thank you again for letting me do this, and hopefully have a great turnout, people as well, bring them into town, so.
Yes, absolutely, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
September twenty seventh, mark it on a calendar, so, and do we have on the community calendar, Megan, do you know?
Um, I'm sorry, I can have it, so.
Um, okay. Sorry, side note, consideration of third and final reading of ordinance twenty-five thirteen.
No, P.
It's eight A, yeah.
Sorry, thank you. I move to approve third and final reading of ordinance twenty-five thirteen, chapter one ten.
Sorry.
An ordinance of the city of Waverly, Nebraska, amending chapter one-ten of the Waverly Municipal Code relating to business licensing franchises, C A T D, payment to the city.
Any discussion? Okay, call for a vote, please. Motion carried four to zero. Consideration of second reading of ordinance twenty-five thirteen relating to water rates.
I move to approve second reading of ordinance twenty-five fourteen.
Sorry.
Discussion?
An ordinance of the city of Waverly, Nebraska, amending Title V, Chapter fifty-one, Section fifty-one, one hundred and eighty of the Waverly Municipal Code, water rates.
No, sorry, no discussion. Okay, call for a vote, please. Motion carried four to zero. All right, consideration of second reading of ordinance twenty-five fifteen in relation to sewer rates.
I move to approve second reading of ordinance twenty-five.
Sorry.
An ordinance of the city of Waverly, Nebraska, amending Title V, Chapter fifty-two, Section fifty-two, point thirty-nine of the Waverly Municipal Code, sewers, base rates, and Section fifty-two, forty, sewers, surcharge rates.
Any discussion? Call for a vote, please. Motion carried four to zero. Consideration of first reading of ordinance twenty-five sixteen.
I move to approve first reading of ordinance twenty-five sixteen.
Sorry.
An ordinance of the city of Waverly, Nebraska, assigning the Waverly Ridge as a subdivision to Ward Two, and amending Chapter thirty, Section thirty, of the Waverly Municipal Code... and amending chapter thirty, section thirty, of the Waverly Municipal Code relating to division of wards one and two. So when Waverly Ridge was annexed, we did not assign it to a voting ward. And this will now therefore assign it to a voting ward. The Lancaster County Election Commissioner had contacted us asking which ward it should be assigned to. We are to do our best, to all of our best abilities to make the wards evenly populated. And with the growth that has happened in the north ward, and the potential north ward growth that could still happen, Waverly Ridge really does need to be added to the south ward. Typically, Haywood Street has been, Haywood slash Fluff Road would be the dividing line between north and south ward. So this would go against that typical designation. But it does, the description divides it at a hundred and thirty-eight street, so. Otherwise, there will be a significant, significantly more people in the north ward than there would be in the south ward.
Any discussion?
Yeah, really good thoughts. I think that makes a lot of sense. How difficult is it to change the boundaries once we set them? Is it just as simple as bringing forward a boundary change, or what's the process? Because you're absolutely right right now, and then, and somebody announced, by the way, thank you, by twenty-thirty, if we don't have any other further growth on our side, it would float lopsided towards the south, so we might want to make an amendment at some point.
At the censuses, they do redistrict.
They do.
So we will, so in twenty-thirty, there will be a, probably a redistrict.
It would automatically get figured out in terms of areas. So really, we're making the rule until twenty-five years.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, that's great. Okay, makes perfect sense.
How do we communicate this with the folks over there when it's always been traditional, and it's been communicated, you know, that Haywood is kind of.
We'll have, when elections come around, we'll make sure to post this. I mean, we could publish it in the papers, do everything.
And the, this diagram is on our website, so it shows.
Can we get this specific, the one on the website, is real, digitalized?
No, it'll be, yeah.
I went to a review today and I was just like, I don't know what that sounds like.
So this, this will be updated. Also, when they register to vote at the election commission, it'll sell them which border they're in.
Because the election commission gets the updated postal address.
And.
They go the wrong way. They go the wrong one, and they won't be there, they'll have to go the other one.
Yeah.
Yeah, they will. And I'm thinking more about the election folks. We'll need to educate them, too, because a lot of times their only question is.
Or they're stopped.
Yeah.
Gotcha.
Yeah.
It's like a check.
Yeah, really easy.
Yeah.
Gotta ask an answer.
Can't we just post this, like, at the election, I think, can you post that there?
I think they do, too, if we have maps of the wards. The last, last election, they did, at my point, it was reasonable. Um, they did have maps of the wards.
Will we all poll at the same place?
Well, then, yes.
We don't want the.
I didn't want to assume where you voted.
Al, we don't want the north taking over.
That is true.
The north line, though, is a lot longer than the south line.
That's also true. South side.
That was pretty sensible.
Okay.
Our south side votes early and often, so that's.
We're the rebels.
There you go, that. Vote early and often.
All right, call for a vote, please.
Motion carried, four to zero.
Thank you, Tom, that's all. Okay. Committee of reports, committee of services, marks, and rap, Allison.
I actually have, I prepared this.
Oh, go ahead.
So, great, it's really, doesn't it? Okay, flag football started this last Saturday. It was a great first day. Although Dirks' team did lose.
Isn't it?
It's important, yeah.
I'm not rooting for any signs.
Soccer season is going to be delayed a week. It will start nine-nine just due to some coaching issues and then having a staff meeting prior to the start of the season. There are twenty-three teams signed up for soccer. So we, yeah, not bad. We are awarded fifteen trees from the state arboretum. Yes, okay, sorry. From the Trees for Nebraska Towns grant, will be coming in some point next month. And then had the dog paws and swashbash at the park, or at the pool on Sunday. That was fun. There was twenty-one dogs there. Oh my God, it was the only dog that pooped there, so.
On the deck, though, in I've water.
Almost in that little drain area. Yeah. Uh, but it was really fun. So. The pool is now closed. This year, we extended it to two weekends, which the first extra weekend went well, and then it was a little cold on the second weekend, but I think lots of people appreciated that extra time at the pool, so.
That all works, Eric?
A lot of time has been spent by Tracy and the group doing cleanup on the storm, so hauling branches, trimming branches, street sweeper to clean them up. I had to rent a lift in the cemetery to cut down a high branch, so just a lot to do with cleanup, including bits of sign damage, so they had to replace a couple of signs as well. They submitted a grant application for the landfill tree grinder to the state, and grants were being announced in December. So I don't know if you have any more information on that.
No, I just said, yeah, just that he did get it submitted, so.
They called, sludge off the sludge pad to the storage bunker, and they've been working on getting back to some of the other things, like trimming around the, they have stones at the cemetery as well as mowing some of the different areas now that they're getting a little bit past the storm.
Awesome, yeah. I'm going to go, David.
All right. Big shout out to Robin for sending me some really good updates here. There's some EMS training. Ryan LGH East came out to the station recently to do a presentation on strokes. One hour of continuing education was received through that. Robin attended a meeting at Mountain Fire and Rescue on a change on reporting systems. It's for calls that are reported to FEMA. We'll need to convert systems by the end of the year, so they're working towards that. Dick Thomas and Robin attended a radio committee meeting at the Lancaster County Emergency Management Center in Lincoln. Seven departments and thirteen departments from the county were present. They discussed funding options for the new radio system, since the current radio, rural radio system is obsolete and parts are becoming harder to obtain for repairs. Two major options discussed were joining the state of Nebraska radio system or the city of Lincoln radio system. Waverly High School is having an appreciation event for Waverly Fire Rescue, Eagle Fire Rescue, Lancaster County Sheriff's Office, and the Nebraska State Patrol First Responders. The event happens on September eleventh, just before the Elkhorn North and Waverly volleyball game. There'll be a hospitality room available for responders and their families before the game, and all responders present will be recognized just prior to the start of the game in main gym for brief ceremonies, so that's awesome with Waverly. San Express Committee met last week for the upcoming San Express. That's gonna be December seventh, so they're ironing out some details there. All departments have signed on for the interlocal agreement for structure fires that the suburban board and city council approved. And several of you, including Robin, went on two days of tours for fire stations to come up with the best practices and things that those folks would like to do differently, so those went well. And the suburban fire board will be meeting in open session. Is it this Tuesday? As we met today.
At three o'clock.
To finalize their budget, discuss bond financing for the new station. That's my.
Anything else you'd like to add?
Stephanie will probably cover it, but the suburban board did approve a bond resolution this afternoon for three million seven hundred fifty thousand dollars, I believe it was.
We don't know if that, yeah.
To finance half the fire station. So that was a huge step.
You, that doesn't mean that that's what they're gonna go, that's the maximum.
That's the maximum amount, as we still need to determine a budget amount at some point.
That's a step. So.
The starting point.
Yeah, all right. So this whole development.
Do I, do I have something to say?
Yeah. Basically, we've just been working in the office, working on tidying up the budget, so next council meeting, we'll have a preliminary budget presentation. And then it is likely that we will be going to the paint postcard hearing, so we will have that presentation at the paint postcard hearing, and then we have our final hearing to set our budget at the last meeting in September. We did get our certified valuation back from Lancaster County. And it increased forty-four million four hundred eighty thousand dollars. So we did see a nice increase in valuation. Our allowable percentage is three point five-five, and we can take up to five percent more than that if we go to the paint postcard hearing, so. Preliminarily, our CPA has worked through all of this, and it appears that the projects that we put in in our workshop all fit within those budget numbers. And so next council meeting, I'll have a more formal presentation for you to agree to that, so. And we did do the fire station tours, just to let you know, we, so Robin, myself, and then two members from the suburban board, Dick Thomas and John Cassinas, went to tour six fire stations in two days. It's a lot of fire stations. It's a lot of fire stations, but we had some, we gained some really great knowledge. And I, and I do think that it really helped increase the buy-in from both sides on what, what really is valuable to those that are doing the hard work in, in providing the fire protection and medical services, so.
I think it's very, you know, some, some of the perks, you know, I think the top of the floor maybe were.
Yeah, I guess, I think we gained some really great knowledge.
They like it, I think, like a lot of stuff, so might be good.
Good, I think those are great exercises. Okay, anybody have anything else? Okay, adjournment?
Move to adjournment.
Sorry.
Call for a vote, please.
Motion carried, four to zero. We are adjourned at seven-twenty-two.